All right, it is seven eleven, time to call this meeting to order with everyone. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I nominate Mr. Clement to give the opening prayer. Mr. Clement, would you like to do the opening prayer?
Sure. Lord, we all pray that the people impacted by the recent weather events over the weekend, keep them in your prayers and help the city make the decisions need to be made.
Amen. Amen. All right, man, call the roll, please.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Booth? Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Booth will be here in just a few minutes. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting and December sixth special meeting? Any council discussion on those minutes?
Mr. Cullen?
Mr. Cullen, it's your turn. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Stein.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
There he is.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. Glad you could make it. Apologies for my tardiness.
Bye.
Right. All right, so we're citizens comments, do we have any citizens comments? All right. Business and organizational comments. Okay, committee discussions, we're having committee discussions. Mr. Clement did put in, so far I've only received Mr. Clement's wish list for on the committees, so just like to have those all put in. I'll say I returned my wish list in the same manner it received verbally. Oh, okay. All right, department updates, we have Mr. Cohen and Mr. Barber, which one let's go first? Mr. Barber?
Sure.
What were yours?
All right, so it's our last update, our, wanted you guys to update on our run goal, I am, right now we're twelve percent above last year. And as of November, we've actually surpassed our busiest year in the history of actually keeping track of all of our calls and responses. Our can supply is frequently low right now, we're working with the health department, they're funnest that supply, but we've had a pretty high demand for twenty twenty one. It's the last update, we've had two structure fires, very minimal damage. Quick knockdown, so we were very much less eventful than they would have been. We're still waiting on the gear that was ordered. Was ordered with capital through money from the budget, but it takes a while to get that gear in, especially with COVID, so we're still waiting on that. We recently had the breakfast through the volunteer side of the department at the Elks, that was another successful event. Had a lot of support from the community, so that helps out a lot. We've been working on the fire department as far as interior floors, walls, trying to get stuff cleaned up. Cleaned up and repainted for the holidays, when I think people that haven't been in there for a while might notice a large, a big change. December second was physical agility testing for all of our candidates. We have firefighters candidates that are going through the hiring process right now. And the fifteenth will be the cognitive testing, the written civil service exam. We have, thanks to Scott, we have a bunch of stores hose connections which are large diameter hose connections that install on the hydrants throughout town for our larger water load areas. What does allow us to do is just faster and more easily connect the large diameter five inch hoses of fire hydrants in the community water supply, so we'll be doing that in between calls. We've been preparing for holiday events, we have the toy giveaway on the sixteenth and seventeenth from five to eight P M. Santa Claus will be there again this year. We changed things up last year because of COVID and all the stuff that we were trying to prevent. This year, we're gonna have the toy giveaway back inside of our station again, down in the Bay Area. The Bay Area will be the only area that is open to the public, though we will not have public bathrooms. So that's five, day, sixteenth and seventeenth, you guys can pick up a, you can pick a present out and see Santa Claus for pictures like this been two years ago. We have the Santa Parade on the seventeenth, starts at four, we had to start at four o'clock this year due to all of the events that we have going on this, the next few weeks, we have three, actually three events that day that we're working on. Which is the reason why that had to start at four o'clock. We had the basket program, which is the Christmas basket program, this will be the seventy-third year that the Saturday, seventh or seventh fourth, I guess the seventh third, but anyways, that's a joint effort between our department and your county of voluntary department. Those baskets will be delivered on the eighteenth to the community. And we should have a year end report to submit to council and the city manager by February. That's all I've got.
Just to ask a question, but you know, you're waiting on your gear, but you still are fully equipped with your gear right now, you're replacing outdated equipment.
We were replacing gear that has a lifespan that expires in ten years. So every ten years, like a piece of gear goes out of date. So what we do is we have a schedule that we cycle through. And every so often, we will buy, purchase different gear items just to keep that flowing, so that we don't ever have a set of gear that just expired with nothing to back it up.
Good. And also the fire hydrants, where are we at with, with all of those, or are you almost down to minimal fire hydrants?
We're in really good shape on hydrants right now, between the grant work and Jason's crew. We have almost all of our hydrants that need to replace or repair taken care of, and we actually have spare cash right now.
Nice.
So we're doing very well with that.
Could also have spare hydrants.
Very good. Could says, who's giving you money on toys? Is that, can they do that?
Through the volunteers, we have a treasurer.
Somebody wanted to, somebody wants to drop some cash for that, how would they do it?
They can, they can bring it to the fire department.
Okay, if anybody else had any more questions, so thank you, chief. Just to expand a little bit, we're actually in the process now acquiring extra hydrants, where chief's gonna get with this, and we're gonna start changing out the hydrants that only had three inch connections and start putting standards on and actually upgrading versus just fixing. Okay, great, thank you, sir. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, Mr. Cohen, what was yours?
All I've been know, the time you were at asphalt stuff in the year, we can't get asphalt. So we, we are working on still back on potholes, but we're using bone for the remainder of the year, gets through till spring. So I just want to put that out there, we filled holes all day yesterday, we had always filled all day. We're gonna extend the lead pickup, we were gonna stop this week, we're gonna extend it through Christmas on Mondays and Wednesdays, just because of the weather we have with the rain and we stick together, that back won't figure much, so we're gonna extend that. Tomorrow, the remainder of the services on Lockin Street will be tied over to the new main. They're gonna get all those done and sort of clean up down through there the best they can for the time of year it is. They're waiting on topsoil and that'll be topsoil on that, and then going up on Saint John Street, we're cleaning, cleaning up what they can up there. There's a project coming through with Columbia Gas next year in L A in the road. So we didn't asphalt yet, because we don't want to put new asphalt down, have it cut right back out next year, so we're gonna wait till next year to get new asphalt up there. The same with down around Myers and Nursery. They just put a new water main down on their own. We're gonna take care of it the best we can until, until next year, there's a new sewer project. So Meyer Street's gonna be dug up with a new sewer put down there, and then it'll be asphalt along with them there. The directional boring out on six ninety one, and Kimberly Road's going very well. Really no issues off there. They're gonna start tying in, they'll start tying those services in after the first of the year. And then that, that'll be the end of the water project, once that gets in and everything gets cleaned up and replaced. The meter project, the replacement project's still going very well, they're moving right along, we're still looking at an April first, April eighth for that. We put all the plows and salt spreaders on the trucks and tested them, make sure we were good to go for when the weather decides it wants to change, I know last year on Christmas Eve when we're in here plowing and salting. We'll get all that ready. And I just got one more thing, for the folks at home that are watching, they need to keep an eye on the Nelsonville page or the Facebook page, social media, and just, just watch for planned outages for water and any kind of boil orders that we have.
Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Okay.
I had to make a correction, I had stated that the Santa Parade was on the seventeenth, it's on the fifteenth. Same day as the civil service test.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cohen, thank you. So one quick add about the meters, so the new meters being in, some of them are already reading in real time. And we already caught several people leaking, Taylor's team's doing a fantastic job of reaching out to them. Before you know it, they'll have access to see that on their own, but it is catching leaks immediately when people are pushing through lots of water quickly, and so.
Let me add on top of that, some meter lids, people will see that they may have a hole in the meter lid, a small whether they're going to taking the readers out, if they don't have the lid to replace it right now. What, what had happened is the person running where to read meters, some of those meters aren't reading yet, the new ones. So the guys went out and those were unread meters is what they were called, because they weren't reading. They kept having to read them with a reader and it wasn't picking up, so that way if they take that out, we'll know that it's a new meter and to check it instead of spending time trying to read it and everything, we can just get straight to it.
Okay.
In that regard, can people call in if they haven't got a phone number on? I said you're catching people that having leaks, do they call the office and leave a phone number on their account, so if they, if you catch a leak, you can you might not have everybody with today, we don't have a phone, but like back in the day, you get a lot of people have cell phones and things, so it'd be a good suggest to have people call in and leave a phone number on their account, so if you find a leak, you can call them quickly and
I would say, go ahead. I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, it's extremely important that we have everybody's accurate contact information. It's on them to get it to us, because we, whether it be a leak or a payment issue or you name it, we've run into this before where we don't have good numbers and we have to send them a letter or no snail mail, and that's just more time that their water.
You can lose a lot of water in three, four days.
Absolutely.
I'd suggest that everybody that makes sure that they have a legitimate phone number on their account, so, you know, save you some cash while.
Very good idea.
I was just gonna add the the Robert and Tara are pretty good, if there's a missing number, they'll ask you in the window. But yeah, anyone can drop off their contact information.
There's a lot of people changing phones, dude, I mean, it's not like.
I will say with the leaks, it is, it's, it's being detected so quickly, we've detected probably six, I think. That, oh, I, there's not one of the six yet with the new meters who has believed us when one of the staff called, so you get a phone call, like, they're saying I believe, there's no way, nope, we're getting real time, how many gallons per hour is running through your meter, please believe us. I don't know if it's, like, people have said, like, I don't hear the water running, or there's no way, I just got my bill, or what, we're like, nope, the meter detects it twenty-four hours, so I just.
One of the things that happens around here, if you have a galvanized pipe, it can leak one minute and not leak the next. And laymate, it can get expensive.
So if your meter has been changed out, does that mean your meter?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're going to plastic lids in the new meters.
I noticed that.
And, and one of the issues is, is those new meters won't read through the metal lids, the cast lids, so so if they take that out, it gives so much less signal to come out.
Well, I saw that I had the meter, I just.
I didn't have a notification on that board. They're doing them so quick now that they're not even putting notifications in. But if it's got a plastic lid, it's a new.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. No fire.
One more, one more meter addition, so it does look like we were able to get the funding through the existing grant, even though it's not the city's responsibility, but the way everything's working out with this grant, we're going to be able to provide a one-time change for all our commercial customers as well, which we benefit from, they'll be responsible for maintaining it after that, but it puts everybody on a clean slate going forward. And it definitely benefits us, because now we know they have a fresh working meter. For example, the jails just went out, Doctor's Hospital, I'm not sure what it's called right now, but it doesn't work. And.
Three thousand ten, we had them all tested and they was leaking quite a bit around there.
So, and they'll be the same style as the residential one, they'll send it automatically.
Absolutely, they're all gonna be master meters and new meters. So.
They were still on the meter, we're just gonna replace it.
Correct, and then last year, I believe it was under your watch when we did the, when we passed the legislation where they have to.
Every three years.
Three years, so that'll, that, I think that's good, good business, we're giving them the materials fresh and then in three years, they're gonna be responsible for having it tested and so forth, so I mean, we're setting them up for success.
So will they do those after, will they do commercial ones last and after all residential?
Yes, we're, we're changing the jails, it's supposed to be in this week, this is.
Just because it's.
You should see the change order probably January.
Awesome, thank you very much, David.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda from the agenda we received via email. It had ordinance one hundred dash twenty-one, one hundred and one dash twenty-one, one hundred and two dash twenty-one, and resolution twenty-two fifty-six to the agenda.
I will second that motion.
Mr. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And can, Mr. President, can I add that we've asked for those to be to the clerk vice or, on, what was it, Wednesday, Thursday, if you can have it ready and prepared for the weekend?
We asked legislation to be on Wednesday evening to Bob's office and the court, then later than Thursday.
Can we back counsel up a day to Tuesday? And so that would allow the Vol director to, to be able to get them to Susan by at least Friday at noon.
Though they were completely my fault. Okay, so they were just, I forgot about them, it's other crap, so it was completely my error. All right.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
We used to have like Wednesday and then.
Okay. Yeah, all right, so, all right, so we've got those, call the roll, so let's go to the first reading. Ordinance ninety-nine dash twenty-one, I need someone to introduce it, please.
An ordinance authorizing city managers Scott Frank to award Tan Construction Incorporated the contract for the VFW Lift Station Replacement Project. Whereas the city has been engaged in the VFW Lift Station Replacement Project and a bid process was held for the contract. Whereas Tan Construction Incorporated submitted a bid on December third, two thousand twenty-one, here to attach. Whereas the city wishes to award Tan Construction in, in the contract for the VFW Lift Station Replacement Project at a total contract price of two hundred seventy thousand dollars. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City Manager Scott Frank is authorized to award and enter into a contract with Tan Construction Incorporated at a price of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the VFW Lift Station Replacement Project. This ordinance is being cast as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that construction may start as soon as possible and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do it enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules, third, fifth day of December, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter?
Do we have a projected timeline of when this will be completed?
They believe they can have all the materials in a hundred and twenty days, if that's accurate. That's very hard right now, supply chain's the biggest issue of all our projects. If they get it in a hundred and twenty days, they believe they can convince work upon arrival of materials. And then it shouldn't want to be a couple of weeks for start to finish. Okay. Motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
I can do it now, second that.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance one hundred dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, ma'am.
An ordinance approving change order number two for the water system improvement water line project, contact and operate with city manager Scott Frank to sign and authorize said change order and declaring it an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into the contract twenty twenty water system improvement, whereas several items on the contract need adjusted in order to complete the contract. And whereas change adds two line stops necessary to abandon the previously unknown existing line discovered on Walnut Street for six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each. Whereas the change has summarized, is summarized in the Exhibit One. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order number two for the water system improvements water line project as described in Exhibit One. The change shall add two line stops necessary to abandon the previously unknown existing line discovered on Walnut Street for six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each, totaling twelve thousand five hundred dollars. City Manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into accept and or authorize the contract change order number two for the twenty twenty water system improvement as shown in Exhibit One. This ordinance shall be passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point three because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to ensure that the twenty twenty water system improvement is completed in a timely, correct manner. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do it enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the thirteenth day of December, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter?
There's a question.
Okay, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Okay. Ordinance one hundred dash twenty-one? Or, sorry, one oh one dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Second, ma'am.
An ordinance adopting temporary appropriations for two thousand twenty-two. Whereas temporary appropriations need adopted for twenty twenty-two. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Temporary appropriations are hereby adopted for the year twenty twenty-two in accordance with Exhibit Eight, that here to and incorporated here by reference. The auditor is authorized to take the temporary appropriation and revenue projections to the Athens County Budget Commission for approval. The auditor is authorized to request the certificate of resources from the Athens County Budget Commission and said funds are not appropriated until the certificate of resources is received. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law. Do it enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, ordinance one oh two dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one appropriations ordinance to amend the appropriations at the close of business on December thirty-first two thousand twenty-one to match the actual expenditures and anticipated receipts through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be adjusted at the close of business each year so the funds appropriated match actual expenditures and anticipated receipts. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The two thousand twenty-one appropriations are amended at the close of business on December thirty-first two thousand twenty-one to match actual expenditures and anticipated receipts through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The total appropriations are increased and decreased in the present amount. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law. Do it enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, norm, or, resolution twenty-two fifty-six, I need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
A resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Nelsonville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Ohio Department of Transportation Transportation Alternatives Program, or T A P, and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the Transportation Alternatives Program provides financial assistance to political subdivisions or non-motorized transportation facilities historic transportation preservation and environmental litigation and vegetation management activities, and whereas the city of Nelsonville is planning to make capital improvements to accessibility and mobility corridor. And whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority for the community and is a qualified project of the Transportation Alternatives Program. Now this is to be resolved by the city of Nelsonville. City manager is hereby authorized to apply to O D O for funds as described above. The city manager is authorized to enter into any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law. I wasn't sure if we wanted that either.
Yeah, it's a running rule. So I would just stand a motion to adopt without all resolutions. Yes.
In the past, we have always, the.
I don't care, we do it on one reading resolutions and we adopt, motion to adopt.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right, moving on to, moving to review and sign council code of conduct, everybody's got the code of conduct that was discussed and adopted?
Yeah, just, just, Mr. President, I have to repressure, these, this is the exact same code of conduct and rules of council that we approved February twenty-second of last year in a regular meeting, so really just revisiting this for people who've been elected in new terms and new council members to ask that they review and sign the code of conduct, so that we have that up the first, has that on file that everybody is familiar with with this, and basically yeah, adheres to it, really breaks down kind of how we operate, council meetings, committee meetings, all of that, and then as far as code of conduct. And then as far as code of conduct, how we interact with one another, how we interact with city employees and how, sorry.
Meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry. How, if you don't follow the rules or have misconduct, sorry. That's like, you know, like iPhone has this new setting, the signal on your like emergency call is like, it rings through and I haven't figured out how to like stop it from ringing. Anyway, but sanctions up to and including censure and being removed from committee assignments, et cetera, if you are building your own.
Also, it also, how you interact with the community as well?
Yes, also how you interact with the community. I think is there something in here on social, like social media, being professional, not disclosing confidential city business, not making your article remarks, being respectful to all persons in their business.
Position of common sense.
Yes, you would think. So what we want people is to, okay, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. You're such a rule breaker.
Again, these were things that council, the last council discussed and adopted in a regular meeting on February twenty second of last year.
It's very common sense stuff.
Well, I thought the only one that could be calling without order was the council president.
Can't call without order.
Not just saying council, man.
Huh?
You're out of order, Mr. Sherman.
Yeah.
See, right there, that's why we have a council president. Yeah, I thought the only one that called somebody out of order was the council president.
Where are you?
Not the council, not even the council.
Where are you seeing this?
Put that in there, man.
It's basically that we're following Robert Rules of Order, which allows for the head of the meeting to do that. And the city law director is technically the problematicarian to ensure that we're, ensure that we're following the rules. So I don't know what you're seeing where anybody could call somebody out of order.
All right. If you would, please sign those and turn them into scum, Frank, so he can put them on his own.
Okay, so section fourteen, number A, any person shall violate these rules to council president or any other member may call them to a budget council president. Not call.
Unless it's the council president who.
Out of order. Or if you're potentially in a committee meeting, if you're the chair of the committee, then you would be.
Well, then you'd be president.
But. Right. Any more discussion on that? All right, city managers report.
Um, the cap grant that you guys just approved, thank you. What that's going to be for is for the safety corridor that we improved a few weeks back. And then also to supplement our canal street project if we get it. So if we can get it and we get a large sum, that'll go to both of those. So as you know, we still have quite the outstanding balance on the tap or the canal street project, I think one point three is our balance. And then, of course, next year we'll be able to go forward on the, the monies that just passed through the commissioner, through the county channels, named up in the name of it, but there's more next year to go after. So thank you, and hopefully we get that. The charging stations from A P, I just want to bring that up again. So just to refresh everybody's memories, we did not get approved on the first round. However, money was returned and now we are fully funded. And we do have a company that can execute by the timeline. I am legally required to advertise, so I need to meet that requirement. Paul is going to help me with that after the meeting. And maybe there's another company can do it out there cheaper, I don't know. But I do know that one company can do it for certain by the deadline and by the numbers that they gave us. So no matter what, we can get it done. And also if I pay, they pay for it, we charge them. They have a card or how you do that? See, you need debit credit. Most of the time, these people have accounts already set up with the company. So it's E V Charging Solutions, I believe is the company already that does the charging. And so you're, these folks that have these cars already, their cars already have connections to these different fuel, fueling stations, if you will, and tells them where it's at. So we're actually in a desert through here. So this will be good for them and it plays, I mean, Justin could probably explain it better than I can, but it's all right, I just wanted. Yeah. So you guys can set the rates when it's time and they get in there. And we'll have, you know, of course, we have to get the rates from supplier and then you guys set the rates based off that. So we are in agreement for those to be installed by the end of February. And they're going to go in right behind the Dew House on Columbus Street, the grassy area there in front of the older apartments that Hawken College prepared to put international students in.
Yep.
So that's good news. So we got the four hundred and fifty square. And a reminder, we have to pay for all and then they reimburse us the hundred and fifty. Uh, the new flood maps, I've talked about it quite a bit. They came back around favorable to the city. They moved the floodway significantly over. The cliff notes are the floodway has moved basically from my backyard to the front of the trailer park down Patton Street. It jumps the tracks at the railroad depot through the middle of Rocky Headquarters, through the houses, on the track side of Meyer Street where it connects down to Patton. And then it goes through the old Rocky Warehouse down in front of Victorian Village and continues on down in front of the old sewer plant. And then eventually jumps behind the old Carter lumber. It goes down through there. And on the Hawken College side, it expands clearer to the road of Hawken College. So that is very unfortunate right now. We have to be at the end of this month to provide our comments. Our engineer is out of country right now and doesn't return until December twentieth. So currently I'm gathering data to ambush him when he gets back to put together plan going forward. The only thing I can come up with now is just gather elevations. I have elevations of all rocky properties, L S property, hoping to get the trailer park property and the Victorian Village properties very soon. I need to go get Mr. Ru and get his properties elevations very soon. And that way we can stage some sort of argument to hopefully keep it on the riverside of the tracks. Right now, I can just tell you on the surface, for whatever reason, the old L S building, now Hawken College building, it's roughly fifty to a hundred feet behind that building. But yeah, it goes through the middle of the Rocky Headquarters building. The elevation difference between those two buildings is a half an inch. So it makes no sense to me why it goes through one and not the other. But so that's where we're at on that. And then after we give our comments, then they'll send somebody over to do a public meeting. And from there, it's, we get what we get. And Mr. Troy here will have to take the lead from there.
Sir, ma'am, all right.
That's right.
Have it.
Um. So just so I understand, like, is there, is there a way that we can replus, like, a delay for our response considering our engineer is out of town?
You can ask. My preference would be the answer within that period of time.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to worry about whether or not that's granted.
And then can I ask, how long are these flood maps put through? Because what I remember from before with our previous city attorney is that we've been in this kind of conversation process with them for a number of years and that a new mapping system should be coming out in just a couple of years, maybe? Or like, so where is that? Like, it's every ten years, correct?
So the standard timeline is every ten years. This all came about roughly in two thousand thirteen and the city put up an ordinance fight and they just disappeared. They being FEMA. And nothing was heard from them until March of twenty, when COVID kicked off. And Mr. Hunter basically gave them the boot. And then they came back again in June, July of twenty. And they had a meeting in Columbus. We went up there. Mr. Hunter and our engineer, myself, put up a good fight. We didn't hear from them again until the Friday before last when a box showed up. So.
That's been their, that's been how they, there's never, never been no rhyme or reason to how, when or how they responded. We were, we are expected to respond ten, thirty, or sixty days. And, and the rule, well, this depends on, in the past, depending on what would happen. They were supposed to be responding to us in thirty, sixty days, and we wouldn't hear from them for two years.
I guess my question though was, do we expect another new mapping system to come out in twenty twenty three, which would be ten years after the last? Or is this resetting our ten year?
This wouldn't, mine, I can only assume at this point, no logic applies to these folks. But my assumption would be this would reset our ten year mark.
On top of that, what, what is our actual deadline date again?
December thirty first.
Is there any way to email our engineer with this stuff so he can?
He would use very specific code with me when he gets back. He's on vacation. So, well, he was retired to start with, so. Right, right. Gary?
We bought our house on Fayette Street, old Doc Johnson's place back in ninety eight. It's a two and a half story house. The basement sticks out of the ground four foot. Kenny Highland did my survey and my elevation certificate in ninety eight when we bought the house. So, so the first floor of my house, which sits on top of the basement, which basement's out of the ground four foot, is a foot and a half above the flood plain. Okay, I've been paying flood insurance on that place about twelve hundred dollars a year, you know, because I have a mortgage on it since nineteen ninety eight. That mortgage will be paid off in twenty five. What I'm saying, what I'm wondering is you're talking about on this side of the tracks, the flood regulations, because the flood regulations on the other side of the tracks, the flood plain is stating FEMA stating in a five hundred year flood, I could have four foot of water on Fayette Street.
So the flood plain itself has actually shrunk in the new map? Specifically what I'm talking about?
Yeah, how's my flood insurance?
I can't, I can't answer anything about flood insurance.
Well, I pay that only because I have a budget.
It's important to realize what FEMA wants to do is expand the floodway. And then the floodway, you can't even get flood insurance or a mortgage.
And you can't build anything, either.
Unless you get a hydraulic and hydrologic stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so we had our monthly meeting down at the new sewer plant. The, the general contractor has not bumped timeline yet. Estimated completion is still December twenty twenty two. He does not feel that we'll make it, but they have not officially moved the date yet. Again, the issue is manpower and supply chain issues, but for right now, they're still on track. So all is well down there. I don't know if you've been down that way, but there's good progress. So go check it out. The house on Fayette Street that we had a special meeting for is gone. It's gone.
Totally gone.
Totally gone. It was done by, they started at, well, they were supposed to start at seven in the morning, but Jason screwed up. So they started at seven forty five and they were done by one thirty. And they made it very well known that they wanted to start at seven. It's, it's an inside joke. Anyway, so we were going to pile lots of dirt up there, but the dirt was so wet, it wasn't good dirt. So with that said, as dirt, good dirt becomes available, we will stack it there in two other places within the city to eventually move it forward once.
I have some bells and hay coming tomorrow to dress it up just so it looks a little bit better while it's sitting there.
Sure. So that's all completed. Gary?
Are you talking about the, the three unit apartment or are you talking about what was done behind it?
The two, the duplex behind it.
Okay, so this is one of the main reasons I come to the meeting tonight. So the city of Nelsonville is trying to raise funds for the three unit department?
No.
Or did the old gas station?
No, he's not doing anything with that. City's not raising any funds at all.
I read a story about Betty Jo Parsley made a comment.
Private citizens are.
Private citizens. Right, okay, so I guess what I'm getting at, I, I understand that that three unit apartment there is nice or especially for friends in the hills coming by there. What concerns me is if that, if that three, I think it's something about John Hartley, used to be a gas station right there. If that is bought by this private citizen group, are them, are them three families going to be forced out of there?
Well, I believe it said in the articles, well, the reason why it hasn't been done yet is their, the private group is finding places for those other folks to go.
That's what I'm concerned with is if them three families.
That's private organization.
Them three families going to be able, if they, if they get evicted or forced out, are they going to be able to get in affordable housing or they going to be homeless?
I would suggest you find the private group and ask that. All right. Uh, multiple complaints after the rain on the paved areas. So I guess what I'm saying is all the streets we paved this year after the big heavy rain over the weekend, people were mad because they have water in their yards. And we're doing the best we can to mitigate that, but we don't have any asphalt at this time to build any curbs. And there's really not a whole lot we can do.
And it rained about four inches in a short period of time.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
It was a sideways rain.
I, I had four inches of rain in my backyard as well, but it mainly came from areas of fresh pavement. So I just felt necessary to bring it up. That's all I got. All right.
I don't do that rain.
Okay, Mr. Smith, have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
By whom?
I left a copy of it with the clerk that I have been sworn in.
I hope he's been sworn in because he voted on our.
Yeah, that's a good point.
He actually, one of them, he actually. Motion to adopt. That's for.
Samantha Gates.
Uh, Mr. Point, is this?
Is she in Athens County?
It's a notary exception.
Okay. All right, then.
So him voting and motioning to adopt, that's all good then? We don't have to revisit that?
I don't believe we have. Okay, he's been.
Actually, section, actually, section three of three of the I R V says that a notary can swear you in.
Yeah, it has to be in Athens County.
Doesn't have to be in Athens County, but it was in Athens County. It says any notary can swear you in.
It actually does need to be in Athens County, so it's whatever.
Well, it was, but that's not your concern.
Oh, yes, it is.
Well, then move on it.
Okay. Well, we will. Oh, that gets, who's that? Mr. Taylor, do you have anything?
Uh, we'll go to the order or?
No, do you have anything else?
Well, it says you have been sworn in. I'll charge you for the last time here, Greg. Actually, that will be my good at the order.
Okay. All right.
What's that?
Yeah, you're, go ahead.
I'm sure, so this is, we're coming into the year, I want to wish everybody out there happy holidays. As Chief Barber says, there's several things going on over here at the fire department this week. You have kids in the Nelson York City School District, bring them over.
Okay. I just wish everyone to have a safe and merry Christmas. Be careful out there, driving and everything. Also, I'm very happy that my son is coming home on the twenty third. He recently graduated Air Force Boot Camp.
Wow.
He is in security forces. He's found out his first duty station, which is North Dakota.
Why not, why not?
Why not, why not? And looking forward to see him. He's a, he's a changed young man, that's for sure. What's your agreement?
We're just talking about the sewage plant and we would not have that fifteen, sixteen million dollars had it not been for the work of Ed Nash. He went to Columbus, he got the whole thing put together, which is a funding nightmare. He got like sixteen agencies to come to Nelsonville and have a meeting. And he recently passed away and I would like to bring a. And he recently passed away and I would like to bring a resolution and to name that facility after Edward G. Mash for his work in getting the uh, fifteen, sixteen million dollars that we got on it. And it's, um, I can tell you, sitting in the utility committee for years, we were just terrified on where we were going to get the money to build that plant.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but then the Ed Mash was actually against the sewer plant and actually posted stuff, many things online saying that we didn't need.
He put the whole bill together.
I can, I'm just, I'm not splitting hairs, but Mr. Booth, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, kind of highlight our Christmas, uh, activities we had through town and on the square. Uh, I really thought, uh, we had some ice bats. It's starting to feel like Christmas. There were a couple of weeks ago, there were a lot of people on the square and, uh, the fire department, a lot of different people who have a lot of, uh, yeah, a lot of work in that. My graduation, I can be back. That's, makes it feel like a little more regular year this year.
Me? You're okay? Well. There. We're not.
Well, here we go. So I just want to, uh, I want everybody to seem kind of safe, happy holiday. Square never looked better as far as Christmas decorations and, uh, we surely miss Jeff this year for sure. So, uh, with that being said, just Merry Christmas, everybody and see you.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, so can we assume that committee assignments will be addressed at the next meetings?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and the election for president, vice president?
It's coming up.
At the next meeting?
Here in just a couple of minutes.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it on the agenda.
We're gonna motion amend it and I forgot to add it.
Okay.
We usually do it here at the end.
And on the budget, will there be any more council discussion on the budget or is that pretty well set?
Well, so the budget is set for the first three months of the year that we won't actually adopt the whole budget. Um, until after the, on this first of the year. But we had to basically, uh, do they call preliminary, preliminary budget?
Temporary.
A temporary budget. So, yeah, there'll be more discussion on the, on the budget going into next year if we, as things pop up and we discuss, so. Yeah, it's not finalized. It's just we have to propose to the county auditor, we have to propose a, a, a three month budget. Um, just so entering into the new year, we're maybe look at it and look at our financials and prove that.
Okay. Um, Greg, if I can add, you'll, the second, I assume, I mean, it's council's process, but the second vote, next meeting, um, I assume there'll be council discussion for the vote for the temporary. And then, uh, we'll ask for permanent pretty much right after the new year because the county version is pretty quick on our budget and, uh, then there should be one or two readings of that discussion. Pretty much the next three meetings is. The short answer.
And I'd like to finish with, um, everyone have a great, safe holiday.
All right, Mr. Frank, would like to have a good the order. Go ahead, sir. Yeah, sorry, I failed to do this mine. I forgot to say thank you to everybody. Uh, FD is on it every year. They got all their stuff going on. They did the pancakes already. They got their Santa parade coming up. They got the toy giveaway coming up. Baskets coming up that, uh, they're helping out York with that we're running out of the city this year. P D, they did their lock giveaway last weekend at, uh, Rockies. They had a lot of people show up for that. Utilities has been on it by picking up little houses and help set up different things. By the way, fire department hooked up all the, uh, figure out a way to make all the little, uh, strip lakes work with all the banners up there and everything else. So I just want to say thank you to all the city employees. Wish everybody Merry Christmas. These guys, they all work together. They make it happen. And, uh, they never complain, so I love all of them and, uh, that's it. Thank you. Okay, motion to amend the agenda to add voting for vice president to president.
So moved. Second.
Hold on, man. Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, so let's start with president. Do we have any nominations for president?
I nominate Greg Clement.
I'd like to nominate Tony Duff.
Okay. Vote for Mr. Clement. Call, uh, Mr. Taylor.
What are we?
Voting for Mr. Clement or Mr. Duffy?
Just so, say who we want or?
Yes, say who you want.
Uh, Duffy.
Mr. Jones?
I'm Duffy.
Me?
Mr. Smith?
Greg Clement.
Mr. Booth?
Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Sherman?
Duffy.
Mr. Clement?
I guess I'll vote for myself.
All right, sir. Okay, uh, thank you.
Um, Mr. President, I'll nominate, uh, Justin Booth for VP.
Okay.
I'll nominate Greg Clement for VP.
Okay.
Me? Uh.
Mr. Booth? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Clement.
Okay.
I sort of voted for myself, huh?
Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Booth?
Mr. Duffy, did you know?
I did. I said, Mr. Booth. Mr. Clement? Um, myself, all right.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Taylor. Uh, Mr. Booth. Okay, all right, um, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Your motion. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
I don't know if it's whatever. Whatever.
Yes. Deuce paper.
Yes.
Should be able to scoop that. Yes.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes. So the engineer was telling me, well, it's, um.
Yes.
He's been a lot of issues in the day.